All right, here's the easiest question for anybody who doesn't follow District One. Is it Marin or Marin?
Thank you for asking that. It might help me not have to correct as many people as I do. It's Marin.
And why are you running?
I'm running because Seattle has a lot of big problems that we're facing. We're a prosperous city and I think we can do better. I have wanted to put all of my power behind helping solve the problems here. I think my background does well as far as setting me up for this role. You know, being in big tech and being inside, you know, a very large corporate environment in multiple companies, leading big teams, managing big budgets, solving big problems, you know, and actually bringing people together, which I think the council really needs right now, but bringing people together to solve problems together more efficiently. So I, you know, I have a ton of experience and just, you know, I have kids. And I think about their future and all of our kids' future and our beautiful city. And I want to start where I am and do as much as I can to be a part of the solution.
I've heard you described as a tech climate activist. Is that appropriate?
I suppose, I mean, you know, I'm a tech worker and I've done so much more in my life. So I feel, it feels a little bit reductive in some ways. I'm a reductionist. But, you know, and the things that I was an activist for, I think most people would have done the same thing. So, you know, it's not like I was hanging off a bridge or something. So I don't know how, I feel like the word activist is kind of getting a bad name. Sort of like the way feminists got a bad name in the 90s or, you know, so whatever.
But the calling to help others, did it not originate during your time at Amazon with some of the things that you saw within that company?
No, I would say I was always, like when I first moved out to Seattle, I started a nonprofit to try to lift up women and girls because when you invest in women and girls, it has like far reaching impacts for good. So I've always been trying to make the world a better place, I guess. When I went into big tech, I was really proud of the changes that I was making and felt like I was still continuing to make the world a better place. I made Amazon more inclusive. It used to be very white male geek. You know, and I launched, you know, Amazon Fresh, for example, right at the time when I was a mom of young kids and working from 6:30 in the morning until 11:00 PM at night. And the fact that I could do my grocery shopping in five minutes online, it kind of saved my life. And so there were things that I felt really proud of, that I was working on and feeling like I was making a difference.
You, I think I've heard you say that you had, you have good memories of Amazon, but it was near the end when you started looking into the labor issues and climate issues where you had a problem.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I learned so much at Amazon and I have by far more good memories than bad. I actually really loved the culture. It's very competitive. So for those of us who are a bit competitive, a bit type A, want to get stuff done quickly, it works really well. The leadership principles are amazing. I would take those leadership principles anywhere. I recommend anyone take a look at them. And they were very much a part of the culture and we were all very steeped in it. And it was things like ownership, earns trust, dives deep, invent and simplify, think big, frugality. You know, all of these things that also apply very well to anywhere I would go, including city council. So, you know, by and large, I feel like I just really, you know, value my time there. But I did get to a point in about 2018 when I, you know, it was like my kids were old enough for me to be able to lift my head up a little bit, you know? And just started to get really concerned about climate because at the time, you know, I mean, I was learning about the urgency of the climate crisis and realizing how much we were kind of all not aware of what, where we were headed and how unprepared we were. And then, you know, just I had also been really passionate about ethical AI and seeing, you know, the onset of that, which I still care a lot about. But it was kind of climate and the way Amazon treated their warehouse workers. I remember being out for a happy hour with a couple of friends and one of them was just like pounding on me saying like, Marin, how can you work there? You know how they treat their warehouse workers. You know how terrible they are in climate. And I was just like, I know, I know, I know. It's like, you know, everyone wants to believe that their employer is, is doing all the right things, you know, and I did. And, um, but it was just sort of this wake up moment where I thought to myself, okay, I can either walk away and have no impact or I can stay and try to change the company that I put my blood, sweat and tears into for the last, at that time, probably 13 years and, you know, and try to make a difference. Try to make this company that I've actually loved do better. And that was the thing is working at Amazon, I was always proud to work there because Amazon was a leader in so many ways. It was exciting to work for a company. You know, sometimes I would compare it to some of the other big tech companies in our town and kind of feel like I'd be a little bored there because they're not, you know, having all of these like wins that Amazon seems to have. But then when I looked at their climate record, they were, I was kind of shocked actually to see. I didn't even realize because I was kind of drinking the cold light, I suppose. Kind of getting an F on every rating scale for climate. Like they were underneath Walmart, you know? And I kind of felt like, come on, Amazon, we, you're a leader. Like we've, that's what we are proud of as employees. Like let's lead here.
We don't have Climate Pledge Arena in Seattle if you didn't make this fight because they wouldn't have a climate pledge right now.
I mean, they may have eventually, but I think we push them to move faster and more boldly. And sometimes people need a push, you know? Sometimes people have blinders on. I mean, I think we all have blinders on at times.
So you have this interesting perspective, perhaps more than anybody else who's running, who has seen Amazon's growth, has seen Amazon go from being this hero in the community in terms of economic growth to villainize for a lot of these things that you described to now being leaned on to bring people back to work and revitalize downtown and revitalize the city. So what, what role should the city council play if you're elected in, in working with Amazon, given it's the biggest employer in Seattle?
Right. I mean, it's a very symbiotic relationship, isn't it? You know, we're kind of getting to the point almost now where Amazon's, Amazon's presence here as well as other big tech companies has raised our housing prices so high that, you know, a lot of people can't afford to live here. And places like Austin and Denver are starting to do better with their tech industries because people know they can go live there and not have to put so much of their salary towards housing and then net out with a larger paycheck. And so it's easier to raise a family there if they want, if they're people thinking about raising a family. So it's almost like, you know, Amazon's success is almost starting to work against it as far as being able to bring people back, you know, bring people to our town. But we have such a beautiful city. We know that people want to live here. Seattle came out top as far as where do college students want to move when they graduate. We're growing. We have just the natural setting of our region is so amazing. Amazon and these big companies are going to need a foothold on each coast. You know, they, they all have built up a presence on the East Coast, even though it kind of started on the, tech kind of started on the West Coast. But in order to hire the number of skilled workers that they need, they're going to need to have a presence. You don't see too many people going to, you know, Nebraska because it's not as much of a draw. It's going to be harder to get people to move there. But you'll always be able to have people wanting to move here. You know, like the mountains and the water and just the beautiful surroundings. I think we'll, we will continue to see people investing in our region and people wanting to move here. I do think that COVID hit us so hard and, and created such a, you know, drastic, fast change that we're all reeling, you know? Economic systems don't come back as fast as, as the, the speed of the change that COVID hit us at. So I think that ideally we do need workers to come back downtown until we can get our feet under us again. But we, at the same time, we need to look forward and understand that increasingly people are going to want that flexibility of work. I was at Amazon, or I mean, I was, sorry, I was at Microsoft in my last role and I had direct reports in five different time zones. Many of them were working remotely. And when I lost a direct report in the States, I was required to hire outside of the US. So if we think we're going to compete with, you know, we, we kind of all think like, how are we going to compete with, you know, Amazon wanting to move here or there or wherever? It's like the real, we have to think about how we're never going to be able to match the savings that a company can get moving overseas. So we're going to have to really be thinking about all of that. And then, you know, AI, we have seen already an increase in AI. It's going to impact a lot of jobs. We're going to have to think ahead about what we want our city to look like, how we want our city to function, how we want to come together as a community to, you know, confront these new challenges together.
So you know this, Amazon has been kind of this litmus test for city elected leaders over the last five or six years, the head tax, the jumpstart tax. Now there's discussion of potentially another progressive revenue tax. I believe you're on record saying you would like to explore another progressive revenue tax. What exactly does that mean?
Yeah, I think we need to just because as a state, we know we have the worst tax code in the nation. So we're, we just struggle in general to have, you know, to, to get everyone to pay their share, fair share into the pot so that we can solve our, all the problems that we have. That's, that's just at a state level. You know, Seattle is a big city with big challenges. They're going to cost money. We all want to see some of these big challenges fixed. It's not going to be free. And so I think we have to, you know, of course, frugality from Amazon, we absolutely have to look at making sure every dollar we currently have in our spending, that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And I would love to see, you know, everyone in the city bubble up, you know, to the mayor and it could even be anonymous, tell me 10 ways in your department that you could save money. Like everyone down in the weeds knows where we, where money is going out the window. Sometimes it's hard for, for example, the mayor or even the department heads to know. But, but people down, you know, at all levels know, here's, here's a meeting where we meet with 12 people every day. They're all making $300 an hour or whatever, and we never accomplish anything in that meeting, you know? Or here's a, you know, nonprofit that we're partnering with that has never delivered on its goals. You know, whatever, whatever those things are, bubble those up. Let's be as efficient as we can. And then on top of that, since we know we're heading into a budget deficit of $230 million by 2025, I don't think we're going to find $230 million by being more frugal. And I think we're going to need more than where we currently are in order to really address the big problems that our city is facing.
So where do you get that?
So progressive revenue sources, there was a workforce, as you mentioned, at the city level that looked at various progressive revenue sources. One idea was a capital gains tax on the top of the 7% capital gains tax that was passed at the state level. You could do 1% or 2%, you know, that helps write our upside down tax code a little bit. So right now we know the poorest among us are paying more than their fair share. So the highest percentage of their income. And then the richest among us are paying less than their fair share. So the lesser percentage of their income. So we're just trying to write that balance a bit the way every other state in the nation does. They just don't have to deal with the, where we're coming from with such an upside down tax code.
But that task force also said that 85% of that expected shortfall is from expected labor increases. But these are labor deals that aren't even signed yet. So, so how do you equate asking for more money when you don't even know how much money is, is actually needed?
I think we have enough, I think we see, maybe I don't understand the question.
So in the progressive revenue task force found that this, this shortfall, that the math they're using is that it's 85% of that shortfall is from projected labor increases. So it's not even set in stone yet, how much money we're talking about there yet. There's this, this number that continues to get thrown out.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, right. I mean, yay, if we find out we aren't actually going to be $230 million in debt, I will be celebrating. We know though, that we've seen, you know, city workers rallying, they're getting pay cuts because they're getting offered a 1%, maybe 2% pay increase, which is essentially a pay cut. We know that we're, we have social workers who are doing incredibly important work and getting paid. Like I've heard the phrase criminally underpaid used. I've talked to many of them and they say, I could go work at Dick's Drive-In and make more money. So labor is always, you know, the largest line item on a budget. And we know we will have to pay our city workers and we should pay our city workers a living wage. The city needs to work for the workers as much as the workers work for the city. So I just anticipate we're going to need some more money. If we don't end up needing more money, I will be the happiest person here.
For the record, you do not support defunding the police.
That is correct.
The phrase that has been used, but also means cutting funding to the police.
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. And you can look at every interview I've done, every, you know, everything I've ever put on my website. Yeah. So my opponent is trying to say that because I think that's the, the only thing he thinks he has to win. He's just going to keep hammering that. Voters will get multiple mailers saying that I want to defund the police. It's just crappy politics. I, to lie, I've looked right at him and said, you know, that's not true, Rob. And he's acknowledged that, but he'll continue to say it. And that's what I have to deal with. So thank you for asking because then at least I get to set the record straight.
So the drug possession bill that was just passed by the council, did you support that? Did you support that legislation?
I think that it wouldn't have mattered too much whether someone would vote yes or no on that. I think it's kind of a mess. If you are someone who wants to incarcerate substance use disorder, you can count on that not happening because officers don't have the bandwidth to do that. We don't have, the courts are backed up, the jails are full. So that's not going to happen. If you're someone who wants to treat substance use disorder, that's also not going to happen because we don't have the diversion program set up. We don't have the treatment centers. We don't have the beds. So I, I'm fine with having the, the law match the state, the city law match the state. That's fine. But I think what we actually did is make a more complex law that is going to have some unintended consequences. And so.
So wait, are you saying that you would have supported the, the original bill that was back on June 6th, but not this bill that was passed?
I don't think we had it right either time, you know? It's like, you know, I just, it's, I would love to see us treat substance use disorder like the health problem that it is. I also stand firmly that we can, you know, I like to say, lead with compassion and refuse to tolerate harmful behavior. When harmful behavior happens, you know, we have to, it's happening to all of us. When a, when a small business owner gets broken into four times in a month, when business is being impacted, you know, I talked to a woman who's a dentist downtown and she has patients who don't want to come downtown and it's impacting her business. We need to think about all of the harm that's happening and make sure that it works for everyone. But we need to solve problems with evidence and choose solutions that will actually work and be more effective and cheaper. And I will always lead with evidence. If the evidence shows that locking people up for substance use disorder, if the evidence shows that, bring me the evidence. If that's what the evidence shows, I'll be the first person to say lock them up. The evidence does not show that. It shows that it, it won't work. It will be more expensive. It will be harmful. We have a lot of evidence to show that making sure people get treatment. And we can do that quickly as well because like I said, we'd, we'd have to build new jails. We don't, we don't have the resources for either path. So nothing is going to happen, just because they passed this law, nothing's going to happen right away. I would love to see us choose the path that is actually based by evidence so that we can solve the problem because we're all so frustrated. We've all been waiting, you know, it just feels like we're throwing money at this and nothing's changing. And, and people are just really frustrated. Compassion is waning.
And all, and all this is interconnected with what you told Real Change was the, the top issue for you, which is homelessness is the top issue for a lot of people. We've seen kind of policing and drug possession intermixed with homelessness as we have gone on here. So we've heard a lot of ideas over the last several years about how to fix it, whether it's homelessness, whether it's sweeping people. What's your, what's your big idea for fixing the most complicated issue of our times?
Yeah, it is complicated. And the reason why I like focusing on homelessness is because when we address homelessness, we take a big chunk out of crime as well. So a lot of the fear and, you know, a lot of the reasons why people are feeling like public safety is their top issue are related to homelessness. And we need, so we need to address both of these things. And when we move upstream and address poverty and mental illness and untreated, untreated mental and behavioral health issues and substance use disorder, we will all feel safer as well when we bring people inside. So I am a proponent of bringing people inside first and foremost, and then bringing the wraparound services that individuals need to those places. So we need all types of emergency housing that can be, you know, put up very quickly. Tiny home villages, stable, you know, permanent supported housing, as well as just the missing middle that will help bring rents down, that will stop pushing so many unhoused, you know, so many people out onto the streets. We don't want, we want our streets to be our streets and our parks to be our parks. I'm a mom. I don't want my kids stepping on a needle in a park, you know? I don't want my kids inhaling fentanyl on a bus. We, we all want these things to be better. It's not good for any of us that people are unhoused.
So should the city work with the state to take a harder line along freeways? Because it seems like the, the situation has become objectively better, especially in the last year, except on freeways. And that is where the crime has been associated. That is where we've seen organized crime. That's where we've seen fires. You see it near the Spokane Street Bridge. A lot of people in this district use, I mean, should the city work with the state to take a harder line on homeless encampments near freeways?
We should be getting people out of encampments as quickly as we can, no matter where they are. I would say more particularly by, you know, if things are by schools or, or in neighborhoods where people are feeling unsafe, that's more urgent. But we should be trying to get people out of encampments everywhere they exist.
So a few more, and this, you know, it's an issue that I think a lot of people in West Seattle care about is the future of sound transit and are they actually going to deliver on getting a line here by 2032? If you're elected to city council, you'll be sitting on transportation committees. You'll be hearing updates. Are you convinced that sound transit is actually going to follow through on getting a line here by 2032?
Yes, I am. I think they will. I think we can do that. I think there are debates, you know, valid debates still going as we do the EIS assessments to find out, you know, which exact path or line is going to be the most efficient, convenient, increase the, you know, have the best ridership and have the least disruption in communities and for the environment, you know? But I believe we will have a spur off the main line.
And you mentioned your opponent. There's an interesting subtext to this entire race and that all the other primary candidates are backing you instead of him and have come out very early and said that. So why does, why do all your other opponents in the primary like you and not him?
Well, I think their letter was clear. They see that I can learn and listen. They trust me. I think they see that I'm balanced and sensible and evidence based. You know, I feel we can have ideology on, on each side. People that are driven by sort of divisiveness and grandstanding and ideology. You can see that in certain council members today, maybe on the left side. And I think we could easily see that on the right side. That's what I'm concerned about. I think that's what my former opponents are concerned about. We need a sensible, balanced, centered council that can work together, that can bring people together to build trust and work together. And I don't think any of us were seeing that from my opponent.
So we're sitting here by the water and I started with tech climate activist, a phrase that you don't like clearly. But, you know, as we sit here by the water and we look at nature, what, what does somebody who care about the climate, what can you actually do on city council to protect the planet?
So much. And that's what I, that's what I love about it. One of the first things to do would just be, it's a defensive move. Just build, it's the tourniquet, you know, we always need the tourniquet and the, and the prevention. The tourniquet is building climate resiliency centers in every neighborhood. So we can turn community, and we've already started this in some ways with a few community centers. All community centers, all 27 branches of the public library, schools built with backup power, air filtration. Our schools are currently, our schools don't have air filtration. Backup power, air filtration, heat pump, air conditioning, so that people have a safe place to go in extreme weather events and smoke events, heat domes, you know? And we're just seeing these increasingly more and more. So that's first line of defense. Next down is we have the buildings emissions. So we have, we have the two biggest contributors to our carbon footprint are, you know, individual cars and big, you know, big buildings. The building emissions performance standards are going to be coming up for this, you know, next council. We need to make sure that they have teeth so that doing the thing that we need to do in order to meet our climate goals is the thing that people choose. So you do that with incentives to make sure that the incentives are here for you to make the right choice to, to, you know, retrofit your building. We can create a lot of great jobs this way too. Like I would love to see a lot of great union jobs. It's an opportunity as much as it is a challenge. But we need to, you know, retrofit buildings and then make sure that as we build new buildings, they're built in a way that will help us meet our climate goals, currently not meeting our climate goals. And then individual cars, we need to do as much as we can to get, you know, to reduce individual cars on our roads. We can do that by building safe, accessible, convenient public transit. We can obviously build out our electrical grid so that we have more electrical vehicles. And then I would love to see us electrify our port. Making sure that when ships come into our port, they can plug in. We have one currently, one, you know, pier where you can plug in. We need more. And then the short haul trucking that runs through, you know, the trucks that run through Georgetown and South Park, going to the warehouses in Kent, you know, all of the pollution is dumped there in those neighborhoods from the trucks, from the, from the ships. But none of, you know, and all of our commerce is going through there, but none of the money stays, just the pollution stays. And we have a life, a life expectancy difference from people in South Park to Laurelhurst of 13 years. Highest rates of asthma. There are families living there who don't, they've lived there for three generations and they feel like they can't justify raising their kids there because of the pollution rates and they don't want to leave. We had flooding in South Park, obviously. So we, you know, infrastructure needs to be, to be brought up. So, and then I would love to see new industries like offshore wind and whatever we can do to make Seattle a part of that, what will be a very big industry. If we can have the offshore wind here, we know, I know we need to have floating platforms. It's a bit more of a challenge. But, you know, I'm endorsed by the machinists. I've talked to the machinists. You know, they build propellers for planes. They can build wind turbines for offshore wind. You know, we need to keep that business here. We need to keep the jobs here. We need to have the expertise here. And I would love to make sure that South Seattle College is, I would love to have that be the school that prepares our kids for the two biggest forces that are coming at this generation, which is climate change and AI. And if we have the feeder school, we will attract the businesses and the jobs. You know, it's a funny anecdote, but I asked ChatGPT, of course, the AI, you know, chatbot, what are the top three existential threats to humanity? And it said, climate change, AI, nuclear war. And so we're not doing enough as a city, but we could do much more to make sure that we are leading in those areas. We have the tech roots and the green roots in our city. And I feel like we should be leading there.
Well, that one was right in your wheelhouse here in the outbuilding at Lincoln Park. Thanks for spending the time. Thanks for. outbuilding at Lincoln Park. Thanks for spending the time. Thanks for sitting down with me.
Thanks, Chris. It's been great.